I call this meeting of Township High School District 211 Board of Education to order. May I have a roll call, please?
Mr. Dombrowski.
Here.
Mr. Hinchot.
Here.
Mrs. Klimkowitz.
Here.
Mr. Lefever.
Here.
Mr. Rosenbloom.
Here.
Mr. Young.
Here.
Mrs. Burke.
Here. Please stand and join me in the pledge allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Good evening and welcome. We'll begin tonight's meeting with recognitions. Dr. Gates.
Welcome to everyone who has joined us this evening. Each year, the Illinois State Board of Education sponsors Those Who Excel Awards to honor individuals who have made significant contributions to our state schools. Tonight, we are proud to recognize individuals who have been honored statewide for their professional contributions, leadership, and community service on behalf of the students in District 211. Each Those Who Excel Award recipient will receive a crystal apple similar to the one displayed here on the board table. We will recognize our awardees in alphabetical order, so when I call your name, please come forward and stand next to the podium. Mike Alther. Palatine High School Assistant Principal Mike Alther received the Those Who Excel Award in the School Administrator category. Mike has provided a nearly constant presence around Palatine High School for the past 15 years. As one parent of two Palatine graduates said, "No matter where you go in the Palatine High School building, you are certainly going to witness that Mr. Alther has left his mark." One way he has left his mark has been in the support of students. One student stated that "He seemed to have more faith in me than I did." One of Mike's core beliefs is the need to build a rapport with everyone involved in a student's education. His selection for this award is a testament to the many ways he has done just that. Congratulations, Mike, on your Those Who Excel Award, and thank you for going that extra mile for so many students all the time. Eric Hauser. Conan High School Science Teacher Eric Hauser received the Those Who Excel Award in the Classroom Teacher category. Eric is a man of many talents, serving as a teacher, coach, and mentor. Eric has worked to not only teach, he inspires his students. One student commented, "Mr. Hauser's compassion for his students and his family has taught me the value of relationships." One parent who has observed those relationships through students who worked with both Coach Hauser and Mr. Hauser stated this about Eric. "The true determination of what makes an outstanding teacher is the impact on society those students make years after the teacher they were taught by. Eric will readily show how his teaching is, in part inspired by his mother, herself a teacher for 41 years, as well as by teachers he has had as a student." I'd like to thank you, Eric, for your outstanding efforts and compassion. I congratulate you on this well-deserved award and all that you do for the students at Conan High School. Antonette Manidi. Fremd High School Counselor Antonette Manidi was recognized in the Student Support Personnel category. Having worked at Fremd High School as both a teacher and now a counselor, Antonette has been described as "a trusted sounding board." She's involved in a variety of organizations focused on student well-being, including the Viking Ambassador Mentoring Program for incoming freshmen and the Adolescent Depression Awareness Program. Parents describe her as "a pleasure to be associated with," while one student who worked with Antonette said, "She makes students want to strive to do the best they can, inside the classroom and out." We are very proud to have you in our district, Antonette, and we congratulate you on this honor. Thank you for all that you have done for us and will continue to do in the years ahead. John Reyes. John is not here. I'm going to honor John, however. It is a great testament to his presence. Conan High School Science Teacher John Reyes was recognized in the category of Early Career Educators, recognizing teachers in their second to fifth year in education. John teaches a challenging course that offers students the opportunity to receive both high school and college credit and also obtain certification as a nursing assistant. An administrator who worked has stated this about John for several years, that she sees the interwoven connection between nursing and teaching whenever John teaches his students. On some weekends when John is not teaching life-saving skills to his students, he oversees their clinical experience at area healthcare facilities. One of his students says, "He uses dynamic perspectives and dynamic scenarios to show exactly how to approach different patients and adapt to assist them in the best way possible. In doing so, he always upheld his respectable and professional figure as a role model." We are very proud to have John be honored with the Those Who Excel Award, and I'm sure that Mrs. Kovak will pass along our care to him, and congratulations. Grace Sordini. Bilingual translator Grace Sordini from Hoffman Estates High School received her Those Who Excel Award in the Education Support category. Grace came to America from Argentina with her parents and brother. She witnessed firsthand the difficulty a language barrier can present, and as a parent herself, she wanted to do something to help those struggling with this in her community. One administrator said she has been much more than simply a translator. With the work she does and the connections she makes with students and parents, Mrs. Sordini truly is a community liaison. One parent referred to Grace as a blessing, saying, "It does not matter when you call her with a question or a concern, she is always attentive to your needs. If she does not know the answer, she will direct you to the person who does." Thank you, Grace, for all your hard work and assistance you offer to anyone who seeks help in the District 211 community, and congratulations on your award this evening. In the Team category, we will celebrate Schaumburg High School's Saxon Solution Team, who was recognized for Those Who Excel Award. Team members, please come forward to receive your crystal apple and then remain standing near the podium. Joe Carey. Anne Espill. Michelle Hinohosa. Vinnie Ann Indino. Dan Lancer. Kendra Letzel. Rico Matarazzo. And Hamid Maryaskawi. The Saxon Solution Team evaluated a variety of challenges facing students within our modern technology-filled classrooms. The first issue the team tackled was cell phones. After studying how the presence of these devices appeared to impact in-class participation in meeting with teachers from departments throughout the school, the team created a new classroom practice to help students and teachers better manage devices in the classroom. One student stated that the new rules were a challenge at first, but after a while, students adapted and followed the plan without prompting, and soon after, participation in her classes increased. Another issue the team addressed was having more pronounced faculty presence in the hallways between classes. One parent said this action has helped his daughter's perception of the school as a safe community. The Saxon Solution Team has worked to tackle many other issues facing students throughout Schaumburg High School and continues to make it a safe and productive space for students and teachers alike. Thank you for all your hard work, and congratulations on receiving this well-deserved award, and your work definitely has made a difference. Thank you very much. Next, we will celebrate High School District 211's Community Engagement Facilitating Team, who received the Those Who Excel Award in the Community Volunteer category. As I call each individual's name, please come forward to receive your crystal apple and then remain standing near the podium. Curtis Bradley. Meredith Brastoff. Next actually is our Board President, Musia Burke. Co-chair Peter Carlson. Dave Carver. Robert Filardo. Dan Goodman. Shantanu Govilkar. Avery Hodges. Board Secretary Anna Klimkowitz. Susan Kobeski. Deepak Kumar. Anita Lee. Kathy Lingel. Tom Lober. Ryan McCoy. Tom Peterson. Deborah Kidos. Jose Kidos. Co-chair Linda Reedy. Debbie Schmidt. Arushi Shah. Co-chair Jose Skrabat. And Lisa Small. Beginning in January 2016, the facilitating team spent countless early morning hours planning and ultimately hosting eight separate public gatherings of combining parents, students, staff, and community members in an engagement series they branded "The 211 of Tomorrow." From these community engagement sessions, the team gathered valuable input that was then presented to the Board of Education and served as the source information for the Board to develop the strategic plan. Throughout the months of the community engagement meetings, the facilitating team created a welcoming environment, and the team consistently demonstrated its dedication to connect with community residents. One particular parent's comments capture the work of the facilitating team. As a parent of multiple students within the district, the parent thanked the team for affirming the primary reason he and his family settled within District 211. On behalf of the Board of Education and all District 211 stakeholders, thank you for your commitment, your dedication, your service, the many hours you spent in our combined project toward the 211 of tomorrow, and congratulations on this well-deserved recognition with my appreciation.
On behalf of the Board of Education, I'd like to congratulate everyone here tonight on their recognitions. We really appreciate your work, and we will take about 10 minutes to get any photographs, and then we'll begin our business portion of our meeting. Thank you. We'll begin our business portion of our meeting with citizens' appearances. Is there anyone in the audience that did not have an opportunity to sign the yellow sheet that would like to address the Board of Education? Okay, seeing none, we'll go ahead and start with the list. We will begin with Mr. Mark Kramer. If you could please state your name, and if you'd like a response from the superintendent, please leave it with Mr. Kovak, as well as to limit your comments to five minutes. Thank you.
Members of the Board, Mr. Superintendent. I'm Mark Kramer, formerly Commander Mark Kramer, and I reside at 1610 Bedford Road in Hoffman Estates. As many of you may or may not know, I filed six campaign violation complaints with the Illinois State Board of Elections in July of this year. While I respectfully disagree with some of the Board of Elections rulings, I am not here to dwell on the particulars. Rather, I am here to direct the 211 Board of Education's attention to a troubling aspect that was uncovered during the Board of Elections proceedings. This is that, according to Mr. John Braglia, president of the Northwest Suburban Teachers' Union Local 1211 and chair of the Political Action Committee of the same name, the union offered support to the six candidates in the spring election. Only current Board members Lefever, Klimkowitz, and Young accepted union support. This support amounted to around $10,000 in campaign contributions in the form of campaign signs, printed handouts, and advertising. The campaign signs did not have the required attribution of "paid for by the Northwest Suburban Teachers' Union Local 1211," for which the Illinois Board of Elections found the union in violation of campaign financing laws. What is troubling is the cloud of doubt which now or will hover above any negotiations and any contract to be voted on by the 211 Board of Education. Additionally, it is deeply concerning that no 211 ethics policy exists with respect to prohibiting acceptance of anything of value from organizations and businesses providing services to or operates under contract with District 211, including the teachers' union. Therefore, I request two things. First, that such a policy be immediately implemented. And second, that Board members Lefever, Klimkowitz, and Young recuse themselves from both the current contract negotiations and voting on acceptance of the contract. This concludes my statement.
Thank you, Mr. Kramer. Next, Mr. Parker.
Thank you. Why is this Board supporting the planned $10 million budget surplus backed by a 2.4% levy increase that becomes a deficit when 20 million is spent on swimming pools, cafeterias, media centers, fields, et cetera? Since the strategic plan is just a plan, why spend 20 million and create a deficit? Why not spend 15 million and create a surplus? Thank you.
Thank you. There's no others wishing to speak this evening. We'll go ahead and move on to our presentation. Dr. Gates.
All right. We are very pleased to introduce you tonight to two of our wonderful counselors and department chairs, but also to the Student Readiness Plan. Growing out of the community engagement sessions, we heard a lot of very helpful feedback about what it is that students need to be ready, the skills that students would need to develop in order to be successful in our local places of business, and the importance of communicating that readiness to our parents. We covered five different components in the community engagement meetings, and tonight is the...we are on the eve of Ready to Go Live with the Student Readiness Plan. With that, I'm going to introduce this to Mr. Mark Kovak, our Associate Superintendent for Student Services.
Thank you, Dr. Gates. And you know, how fitting it is that tonight we are here to showcase the Student Readiness Plan for you on the heels of the recognition of the community engagement team. This really was an outgrowth of that work, as Dr. Gates just mentioned, and gave us the impetus to examine our programming and the way that we support students to go through their high school experience and be as prepared as possible for their first days when they leave us. Tonight, I'm joined by Paula Hill from Conan High School, who is the Guidance Department Chair there, and Mr. Eric Melton, who is the Guidance Department Chair at Schaumburg High School. You may remember meeting Eric just a couple of months ago. If you could advance for me, please. Thank you. When Eric was here, we were reviewing our guidance programming. And if you recall the conversation that evening, it was all about that first day after a student accepts his or her diploma, what is coming in terms of that independent adult life? And so tonight, with the Student Readiness Plan, we are prepared to show you the complement to the guidance program, a tool that students will use to document and track their progress as they move from freshman year through senior year and prepare for adulthood. Another reminder for you is simply that we recognize that we need to serve all students, regardless of the path that they are choosing for after high school. This is not about college-bound, this is about all-bound. This is no matter where a student is going, this tool will help, and this tool will be utilized and strengthen a student's ability to plan and to communicate with family members and those support people in their school. Part of our review of our guidance program with you just a couple of months ago described a series of experiences, activities, or lessons that school counselors would engage students with as they moved through high school. And if you recall, that sequence was carefully planned and laid out so that students would progress in their ability to process information and the kinds of tasks that they would be charged with completing, things that were commensurate with their level of development and readiness. The Student Readiness Plan is aligned with that same vision. And so here in just a few moments, you're going to see some examples within the Student Readiness Plan that illustrate the complexity that grows as students become older within the high school system. The five components of readiness that our guidance program aligns to are illustrated within this graphic, and it is the same five components of readiness that are the underpinnings of the Student Readiness Plan. What I'd like to do is just turn the presentation over to our guidance chairs, because they are the hands-on representatives of people who are going to be working with students as students engage with this brand-new online resource, something that has been a project in our hearts and minds for so long now. It seems like not a day goes by that we aren't thinking about this, and there are many of us in this room who can attest to that. So I'm going to ask them to walk you through just a...I won't call it a snapshot. It's beyond a snapshot. It's not the full immersion, as if you were actually a parent working with a student with a live website. We're going to show you some screen captures that illustrate the different portions of this plan and provide you with that background knowledge that you have a better understanding of what this online tool offers our students.
Thank you, Mark. Paul and I are genuinely excited to share this plan with you guys today, and even more importantly, genuinely excited to work with our students. We're going to start that work next week with our pilot group in each of our high schools, and it's something we're very much looking forward to. So just to orient you with the plan itself, the screen that we're looking at now is the Student Dashboard, or the home screen, to the Student Readiness Plan. You'll notice at the top, each of the five components is displayed: Academic Readiness, College and Career Exploration, Student Involvement, Global Competitive Skills and Wellness. And the three components that are currently active are there in white. You can also see the progress bars that tell a student right off the bat when they first log into their plan, how they're doing in their process, and where they are in the overall process with each of those areas. As you look below that, you'll see there's a to-do list that's currently empty, because it's available for students to enter information as they so choose. So if a student wants to use that to-do list as an academic planner for themselves, they can use it right there inside their Student Readiness Plan. And you'll also have a calendar on the right-hand side that inputs important upcoming dates for the student. If you look in the top menu, from the student's name over to Frequently Asked Questions and even a Counselor Meeting button, a student can now request a meeting with their counselor simply by clicking on a link and sending a quick form through an email to the counselor or to a secretary in the office that will then deliver that request directly to the counselor. In addition, there's a calendar feature that will be rolled out in the future that will allow students to access their calendar and, again, help with their planning and their daily activities, as well as a direct link to the email. If we look on the left-hand side, there's...some of those are carried over to the left menu, and in addition to those, there's In Progress Grades. This actually provides a snapshot for students, and so they'll see every course that they're currently enrolled in and the letter grade associated with that course. The beautiful thing about it is that it updates every 30 minutes, so a student really can get a good snapshot of what their grades are at without having to do anything else besides clicking on a button in their Student Readiness Plan. If they want to see more detailed information, also on the left-hand side is a link to Infinite Campus, where students can go in and actually see their assessment scores and their assignments and the details of those assignments. Also on the left, you'll notice a Bell Schedule and a Safety Concern button. Both of those, within the plan, will direct a student back to their high school website. So it's intuitive in that any student who logs in as a Schaumburg High School student, all the links inside of the system will automatically take them to the Schaumburg website and so on and so forth for Conan's and the other high schools. In addition, there's a History of Student Goals tab on the left, and that really is just an archive. The Student Readiness Plan is meant to be an annual review of goals and setting those expectations, meeting those expectations, and then moving on to the next year to set new goals for the students. But that history of goals really allows a student to go back and look at what they did in years previous and how they either met, achieved, or missed out on some of their goals in order for them to refocus on those goals in the future. Also on the left, below the Infinite Campus link, is a link to Schoology, Career Cruising, and the D-211 Major and Career Cluster's website. Really, at this dashboard, students have within a touch of the screen access to all the supports that they could possibly want within the system. We're going to look at each of the goal components. The first is academic readiness. You can see that the first three bars are Unweighted GPA, Weighted GPA, and Power of 15. This allows the student to interact with this goal. The blue progress screen shows you how far along they are with the actual progress of the student, the current progress, and the D-211 benchmark is an indicator of what we would expect a student to achieve in order to be college-ready. The green marker is an ability for the student to set their own goal within the system, and they do that simply by clicking on the Edit This Goal and move the cursor... and they do that simply by clicking on the Edit This Goal and move the cursor over to the level that they want, and then establish it. Students and their counselors can both work within the goals to establish goals and work back and forth collaboratively to set goals for the students as they move through their high school experience. As we move down these slides, I want you to think of it as like a vertical scroll. So we're going to move down into the next section of academic readiness. And really, this takes us to the PSAT scores. So students, over the course of the years, you're going to see the grade levels and how the focus changes a little bit, but this allows students to look at their benchmark scores established by the College Board for college readiness in each of those areas, in evidence-based reading and writing, and then also in math. And then at the bottom of the screen, it also has a total of credits, and that District 211 benchmark is really just progress toward the overall graduation requirements of 20 credits, but it allows students to set standards for themselves and set expectations for themselves along those lines as well. You can see that as we change to grade 10, the goals are consistent, but some standards might change. A student can then reset their goal for the school year, and you'll also notice that some of the benchmarks shift over, such as the Power of 15 benchmark, becomes established in grade 10. As we move down, again, PSATs change from 8, 9 to 10 now. It allows a student to refocus for that school year, and the total credits earned, the benchmark shifts to 10 to indicate that they're now a sophomore in high school.
And then the changes occur as well through grade 11. Looking at the unweighted GPA, that does remain the same. However, students can adjust their goals, as Eric was reporting. Power of 15 moves up as far as the requirements or the benchmark that we want students to achieve. Again, the test scores would also increase, and total credits earned would be increased to 15. The senior year, and this is one that I want to share a little bit of a personal story that I have of one of my students, as far as the Power of 15. I know when we're presenting to freshman parents, they hear the Power of 15, and they say, "Oh, my gosh, how can my student possibly get 15 college credits before they leave high school?" I have a senior this year that is going to earn 22 credits just this year. She is taking speech, she is taking expository comp, she's taking medical terminology, she's taking CNA, she's taking quantitative literacy, and I think there's one more, oh, anatomy and physiology. And through those classes, she is earning 22 college credits in one school year. I think that's phenomenal. I think it's amazing opportunities that we are offering to students here in District 211, and I know that every year we'll have more and more classes that students can afford that opportunity. So to reach that Power of 15 is not difficult at all. Students, if they earn one class or two classes each year, can easily obtain that goal. So it's exciting. Again, the benchmarks for the standardized testing increase at grade 12 from grade 11, and as well total credits earned. And I know that's another thing that we share with parents, 20 credits. They get a little nervous about that as well. Well, if a student were to even take a study hall and never take summer school, they can graduate with 22 credits, and you only need 20 to graduate. So I think sharing that information with parents, helping them along the way to see each of those grade levels and what the expectations are, and making sure that their students are meeting them along the way, is extremely helpful. So we definitely want this tool to be utilized not only by students and staff, but by parents as well, and we hope that it's pretty user-friendly. At the bottom of each of the goals for the students, there are resources for the students. And so for academic readiness, we have resources as far as grade point average. Sometimes, parents don't know what that even means, or how that is figured. Early college credits, as I was just speaking about, understanding my transcript, what's on my transcript, what our college is going to see. They don't realize that attendance is even indicated on their transcript, so important for them to understand all of the components of that. Academic testing and assistance, course planning and graduation requirements, and official test scores. So we've chosen a few of these to share out a little bit further. College credits, I have already spoken about, and what's really nice on these pages, we have direct links to different resources for them as well. So one of the links here is our Curriculum Guide. So it does link you directly to the online Curriculum Guide, which shares courses that are dual-credit, which shares courses that are NCAA-approved, and helps parents have that readily accessible. Sometimes, they have a hard time finding things on our website, and we're hoping that this one-stop-shop will assist them in finding that very readily. Another link is Transferology, which may be a new term. Transferology is a program that helps students figure out what classes they might be able to transfer. So if they're planning to maybe go to Harper College for two years before transferring to a four-year school, they can make sure that the classes that they're taking will transfer. I know I use this with my own daughter, who's a junior in college, because she was planning to take a class over the summer while she was home at Harper College, and we wanted to make sure that it transferred back to Nebraska. So parents can use this. It is, again, pretty user-friendly, and the link is right there for them. Another resource that we'd like to share with you is academic testing and testing assistance. What's really nice about this, as Eric had said before, each of the readiness plans is intuitive and knows that a student from Conant High School is logged on, so it will take them to their testing facilities and their testing opportunities that they have at the school. This particular example shows the Palatine Testing Center, as well as SAT practice, and that would be universal, the SAT practice site. So again, sometimes, parents have a hard time, or students have a hard time finding, "How do I go and do that practice test through Khan Academy?" This takes them right there. Another resource is Course Planning and Graduation Requirements. At the upper top right is a screenshot of Career Cruising, which is a phenomenal program that we are so excited to be utilizing. I know Mr. Melton is going to be doing four-year planning with his student -- is it tomorrow?
Monday.
Monday. And we are doing four-year planning with our students at Conant on Tuesday with our freshmen. So we want to make sure that those freshmen are planning ahead and that they're able to get all those courses that they want to take, so many opportunities here in District 211 for them to take classes that they're able to fit that into that four-year plan. The bottom picture shows a screenshot of our 16 career clusters. That is a phenomenal opportunity for students as well, and we're finalizing those final eight clusters. This site does share coursework that students can take based on career clusters that they might have identified through the Career Cruising program. So great opportunity for our students.
As we move into the next component area, college and career exploration, you'll notice that the goals are structured a little bit differently here. They allow for both student input, as well as direct input from a system like Career Cruising. In these fields, we ask students to identify college majors, potential career clusters that they're interested in, as well as career options. The career clusters are actually pulled directly from Career Cruising, so students will take a matchmaker assessment, and we talked about that in the previous presentation, through Career Cruising, and they'll identify a couple of fields that might be good fits for them when it comes to the career cluster. From there, we will ask students to input their career choices, college majors that they're considering for each school year, and they'll be able to input those directly into those fields. We think it's a really great combination of student entry, as well as automatic entry, because it creates buy-in and ties in some other systems that we use currently with students, and it also allows a student to really interact with the system. So it's a nice combination in these goal areas. The last piece of the freshman level is Post-High School Destination Lesson, and all that is, is asking a student to input a date as to when they completed a lesson related to post-high school planning. And we do those with our students each year in a variety of circumstances. We talked about those when we discussed the guidance model last time. For any of our students that are enrolled in the Harper Promise program, the Harper Promise goals will show up in the system for them. Again, this is one of those things where if a student is not a part of the program, you won't see the Harper Promise goals there, and this allows students to really kind of pay attention to the goal areas that are related to Harper Promise. We know that students need to pay attention to their absences and their attendance when they're in Harper Promise. We know that they'll have to look at their GPA a little bit differently, and this allows for them to look at their annual unweighted GPA, as opposed to the cumulative overall GPA. Also, the credits earned that are specific to Harper Promise, and the community service hours that have been logged for students. So for those in the program, it really provides an extra opportunity for them to review those areas and to pay attention to the pieces that are important to them as they progress through their years in D-211. When we move into grade 10 and beyond, you'll see that different components are added to this area. We still have the college majors, career clusters, career options, as well as the post-high school destination lesson completion. But in addition to that, as sophomores, we really want students to start to experience what they're looking at and start to get a better feel for actual career opportunities that are out there for them. And so we -- there's a field for career track options. We want students to look at the list of career tracks, identify a track they might be interested in completing, or one that they've already attended, and put it into the system for them. And it really allows them to start to think about the career in a more realistic way, and starts to take this abstract concept and really apply it to the real world. In addition, we ask them to look at some post-high school options, and those could be employment opportunities, those could be vocational schools, it could be colleges, it could be military service, but we ask them to input some areas that they're interested in exploring. At this point, it's sophomore year, it's really just introductory for them, but it allows them to take the next step in terms of the process of thinking about what happens after high school.
All right. And in grade 11, again, we pull students back into Career Cruising, have them investigate a little bit more. Sometimes, they've had new experiences, maybe over the summer, they went to go visit their Aunt Sally and had a new experience, and we ask them to take those career interest inventories, you know, on an annual basis. We may not do an actual lesson with them, but definitely encouraging them to readjust those and see if they get some different results. Also, as far as junior year, we kind of have the expectation that they'll attend our college night. It's a pretty big deal, and we expect that our juniors are attending that and hopefully have a focus now, after our assessments that we've done with them, of different schools that they might be attending, not just wandering up and down the aisles aimlessly. And then a post-high school destination lesson plan would be completed with our juniors as well. And this would be a gradual progression, as Eric was saying. At first, they're just kind of thinking about things, and now we're really kind of getting into the meat and potatoes and thinking junior year of what colleges they might be wanting to attend, or what post-high school plans. Maybe they are going into the military or going into a career. Career track options, definitely are encouraging those as well. And then internship opportunities are introduced junior year, and more and more of those are becoming available through our community and through Harper College. So that is something that is developing even within our community. You don't see that as frequently, you hear about it, you know, through college, but really for high school students to be able to have those opportunities while they're still in high school, before they're paying tens of thousands of dollars to go to college, and then determining that that's not what they want to do. So definitely important, our post-high school options. Now we introduce the idea of safe target and reach. So not only through colleges, we hear those terms with colleges, but even companies, you know, is this, you know, McDonald's, I can apply at McDonald's, that's probably a safe place, I'll probably get a job there. A target might be a little bit more career-based. Maybe they want to be, work at a veterinary clinic and help with the animals there. And then a reach might be Motorola. So that would be something that you could think about as far as the companies are concerned and the military. So really starting to kind of delve in a little bit deeper into that research. And then grade 12, as far as completion and changes, the FAFSA completion. And that is something that sometimes is misunderstood, that if you make too much money, or your family, your parents make too much money, that you should not complete the FAFSA. We encourage all students to take the, or to complete the FAFSA form. Many scholarships are tied to that through universities, so if you have not completed the FAFSA, even though you qualify for a scholarship, you might not be eligible for it just because you haven't completed the FAFSA. So that is definitely something that we'll be encouraging all of our students to complete. Internship options, again, definitely highlighted, and then kind of shifting into now those colleges that I've applied to, or those companies that I've applied to, a little bit more structured setting for these particular information. And then their final destination, so where they're going, or what military branch they're going to be joining, or what company they might be working at, and then a two-year school or a four-year school, if that's where they're heading. With the career exploration, again, we have resources at the bottom of the page for students with direct links. Again, we've just chosen a few to share with you tonight. Financial aid in Harper Promise Scholarship, financial aid with a direct link to FAFSA, because there are some fake ones out there that we don't want students putting information on, so this has a direct link to the correct one that they should be completing. And then post-high school options, looking at College Board, which does share not only our SAT materials with them, but many, many college options and college information with them.
The third and final component that we're going to discuss today is involvement. This does not change much between grade levels. The District 211 benchmark that was established was for students to have two involvement activities, one of which being an in-school involvement activity in each school year. And so students, this is another field that is both direct input and pulling from a system. So on the right-hand side, you'll see the actual, which is actually pulled from our Infinite Campus system, based on registration that students and parents complete at the beginning of the school year and then throughout the school year. And then on the left-hand side is really an opportunity for students to establish some goals and to discuss some of the things that they plan to get involved in in the future, but maybe aren't quite yet registered for. And it really just allows for an opportunity for us to discuss this in more detail and set some goals for student involvement. In case there isn't anything that they're currently involved in, it allows us to really have that discussion and target some things with them that they might be able to get involved in. The bottom portion of this area is community involvement, and this really allows for some flexibility. If a student is a working student and is involved in the community, in that way, they can record work experience in this area. If they are heavy into volunteerism, they can record those experiences here. If they're a student that isn't able to get involved in school because they stay at home and have to babysit siblings, or they have to babysit neighbors, that's an opportunity to input some of the things that they're doing outside of school and some of the ways that they're involved in their community beyond the school day itself.
That's also a great way for them to keep track of Harper Promise hours, if that is something that they're working on as well.
Absolutely.
And then our resources, looking at school athletics and school activities. If you do, we didn't do screenshots of these, but if you do, click on them. Again, it's intuitive, and it will take you directly to your students' school's registration portal. So, and volunteerism, definitely encouraging that. Employment, some employment opportunities, which are offered through Career Cruising and local community, and then involvement goals.
So in the span of just a few minutes here, we've tried to capture the essence of the Student Readiness Plan. I think it's impossible to go into a full how-to manual that quickly, but I do want to emphasize a couple of points. First, the Student Readiness Plan is a student-driven resource. This is something that students will author, staff members will assist and guide, parents will guide and view, and any of the student's teachers will also have access to see the plan, not work within it, but act as a supplemental helper for any of the students that may need a little bit of extra conversation about any of the contents within that plan, as students determine where they see themselves going. Also, I wanted to emphasize that the Student Readiness Plan is a living, breathing, dynamic tool. The content that you saw on the screens today is ours to customize as we determine is appropriate. This website is ours, and we have been fortunate enough to fund this project to this point with grant money from the Joyce Foundation that Dr. Small and others have pursued and made available for this. We expect that there will be greater returns from the Joyce Foundation as we continue to work with them. And we are now turning the corner on the end of what I'll call Phase 1 of this project. We are, as was mentioned, starting to pilot the use of this tool with a selected group of students at each school, starting actually tomorrow morning. It is a great day for us to see the realization of the work that has gone into this. And then in the coming phases, we will see the development of that personal calendar that was mentioned, and also the finalization and realization of the global competitive skills component, as well as the wellness component. So we're looking at some timeframes there of about the early part of 2018 for the personal calendar, and then I would estimate spring break time for those other two readiness components to be live and active within the system. And we're looking forward to bringing you updates about what student feedback and parent feedback are offering us here in the coming months, as well as the improvements and enhancements that we're going to see with these next phases. We'd be happy to answer any questions that you may have about this online resource.
Thank you for the presentation. It was, I know there were screenshots, but you could still actually visualize going through it and really inputting data and seeing how kids could use it, so thank you for that. Does anyone have any questions?
I just had one. Why is it on a 30-minute update cycle? I know that we've eliminated like class ranks and things that kind of keep students from getting a little too aggressive and obsessive with academics. Is there a reason we're doing it at 30-minute intervals?
The only component of the readiness plan that updates that regularly is the in-progress grade. grade report. That was informed by feedback from both parents and students that they were seeking to have ready access to the most up-to-date information. We know students' teachers don't all follow the same grading pattern or sequence when they are accounting for assignments, tests, or quizzes, and so students were wanting to make sure that they had the most efficient way of accessing that information.
I have a question. How do we envision the students updating this? I mean, will they have some time during their class, or is it when they meet with the counselor? How is, how do you envision that happening?
I would say a little bit of both. So when we are meeting with students individually, we can be looking at that and setting goals with them. We'll also be incorporating it with our programming that we do with students on an annual basis. We meet with freshmen anywhere from six to nine times a year. We meet with sophomores at least three times a year, juniors as well, and seniors. So as we meet with them and as we complete things, then we will draw it to their attention and have them complete that.
And the work that was done this summer to really align our curriculum across schools, I think that's really going to assist in getting these different areas completed and working toward these goals, because the work is already there for the projects that we're doing with students and the guidance that we have. The goal-setting and use of the system, I think, is going to naturally fit into some of the work that we're already doing.
I have one more question. I know with the career tracks, you know, they're always fascinating. How do the kids provide some kind of evaluation? Do the kids evaluate where they've been and what do we do with some of that information?
They do. I know that the students at the end of each track do fill out a form, kind of takeaways that they have through that track, how it helped them determine whether that's something that they want to do with their future or not, and that, I know that all of those are shared out with the counselors. Copies of them are shared with us so that when we are scheduling with the students, we can draw it to their attention. Hey, I noticed you went on this track, tell me about it, and is this something, you know, there's classes that you could take at Conant High School that align with that track and that opportunity.
I think that reflective opportunity is probably the most important outcome of those experiences, because it's not intended to be just a trip to go see something and then never think about it again. It really is supposed to have an impact.
Thank you.
Does the, so looking at the sample that you have, it shows that a student, for example, is 40% complete with the academic readiness. Is it sort of intuitive or explain to the student or the parent the different components that make up that?
That percentage.
That percentage, because as I looked at the screen, you know, the screenshots, I'm not sure that it makes sense to me at least, which one of those elements are contributing and.
We're going to let Mark candle that one.
It's a really great question, and I think it's a great illustration of a facet of the plan. This plan is not something that a parent could just sit down and look at and fully understand, nor could a student. It requires work with school staff, the guidance counselors, to help have a person navigate through, and that, I think, is one of the strengths of it, that it fully integrates with our guidance program. And so there are conversations that inform people about the inner workings of how those calculations work. Although we have tried to make it somewhat visible, it is not completely defined. I think the academic readiness page is the easiest one to see with the asterisks that talk about which ones are contributing, but when you get into the college and career area with the text fields, it certainly is less than intuitive.
Okay. But forces some, it forces interaction then with the.
That's correct, yes.
Okay, all right. I'm sure that Dr. Kates will share, but I look forward to hear how the students react to it.
We're super excited.
Yeah, we really are.
We are too.
Yeah, and did you want to explain just how many students we had at each school and in the pilot?
Yeah, and each of the schools has approximately 100 students currently that are freshmen, and then we have a sample of each of the other grade levels as well. For us, we have about five students at each additional grade level that'll be working with the Student Readiness Plan, and each of us are handling it a little bit different in terms of the classrooms that are being utilized or the students that are interacting with, but approximately 100 to 115 students, I would say, at each building.
And that will run through the rest of this school year as we launch the other components, so that we can make sure that we identify any bugs or just anomalies that aren't working exactly as we envisioned, because that is the nature of something as complex as this. And so at the start of next school year, we will have that full implementation with all of our students.
It's been designed from the very beginning to be of maximum utility to students and parents, and throughout the course, we have involved students and parents, and their decisions have guided us along the way and will continue to do so even once we're in flight. You may have seen a little video about building the plane while they're flying it, and that's what's happening here. So we will have our, you know, three components live tomorrow with two more on the way in the coming weeks.
I do have one more question. You have 100 students that have been selected, and sometimes our students have just a variety of attitudes. So do you have a span, so the students that are participating in the pilot, do they kind of cover the range of students that we have?
And I can take that question. I know at Conant, and again, we're doing a cross-reference, so it's slightly different amongst all of the schools, but at Conant, we're utilizing our Prepare Program, which is our students that are at the O1 level that we've kind of bumped up to the O2 level, so from the remedial level to the regular level in English. We also have students that are at the regular, we're scheduled to go into the regular college prep level. Then we have students that are in our Project Excel program that are 102 students that we bumped up to 108, which is the regular level to the accelerated level, and then a regular class of E108 students, accelerated students. So I know that we have kind of a cross-reference of the student body for freshmen.
And we do as well. We're targeting two study hall classrooms, so that's a mix of a variety of different students. And then we're also working with some of our Project Excel students for those other grade levels to sample students who are in accelerated or advanced placement classes.
I have a couple of questions. One is, can you share a little bit more about how parents are getting involved, getting information, getting educated on this, and maybe a little bit more about how they're being told how they can use it in support of what you're looking to do?
It's a very helpful question. We are specifically sharing information with the parents of the students involved in the pilot program. There is a message that will go out at the end of the day tomorrow informing those parents that their students are involved in this activity. It provides them with background information about the Readiness Plan, how the parent can get into the plan, and it also provides a link to a new page on our district website that is devoted to the Readiness Plan itself that provides more in-depth information for anyone who would be interested in reading it.
Thank you. And my second question is, is there, just out of curiosity, I know we have a significant minority population who may be bilingual or may only speak a foreign language at home. Is this, is this available in a translated format for those individuals?
At the present time, it is not, but as I described the dynamic work that is happening right now, there are, we have a list already of future improvements, and that would be included on that list.
Thank you.
I know the Career Cruising program that we do utilize does have an English, and then you click one little button and it changes to Spanish, so it's kind of nice.
Thank you.
Anyone else? Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Kovak. Okay, this will bring us to our consent agenda. There's a suggested motion that the consent agenda be approved as presented.
So moved.
Second.
Do we have any discussion? Member roll call, please. Mr. Dombrowski?
Aye.
Mr. Hinshaw?
Aye.
Mr. Mrs. Klimkowitz?
Aye.
Mr. LaFever?
Aye.
Mr. Rosenbloom?
Aye.
Mr. Young?
Aye.
Mrs. Burke? Aye. This brings us to our Freedom of Information Act, request for your information. Any questions? We also now have our Curriculum Committee Report. There's a suggested motion that the Curriculum Committee Report and recommendations be approved as presented.
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? None? Motion carries. For your information, we also have the Class of 2022 Placement Testing. Any questions?
Nope, just a comment. Excellent job getting the high percentage of participation.
Thank you.
We also have our 2017 School Report Cards. The suggested motion is that the Board of Education directs the superintendent to make appropriate availability of the 2017 School Report Cards issued by the ISBE.
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion?
So when we look at this, has there been any internal changes based on the change in the format for this as far as what we're looking at?
Would you respond to that first?
How are we using some of this data?
There are continued evolutions to the online representation of the data. The State Board of Education is very active in promoting this site amongst the people across the state, and every year they seem to add new elements that were now no longer, are not previously available. In terms of our use of the data, it does inform our school improvement teams and some of the priorities that they set annually, and creates a dynamic source of information to help them determine which priorities should be placed at the top of the list. In particular, this year, I think there's some cause, or not cause, but incongruent information with regard to student achievement tests. Over the past three years, we've seen transition from one test to another to yet another, and the representation of the results of that progression is somewhat difficult to draw conclusions from.
Yeah, so the answer is yes. Each of the district report cards are critical for us overall relative to our district goals, but then individually, they're extremely helpful with the individual plans for each of the principals. It's not uncommon that different schools have a different need or focus or target, and so they also help to inform that. I would cite that the one component that we will be moving over is the Five Essentials that will be coming up at the end of this month, that is an assessment of the learning environments. And so we previously had not, we had used the Five Essentials, and then we adopted something that was a little bit more high school applicable, and the state has requested that all schools return to using the Five Essentials, which is the ISBE-designated tool. So that will, again, you know, provide a little bit more on the school report card, but those surveys previously have also been critical to our work, even though you don't see that on this particular report card. It was a component of that.
Just as an example, and the reason I ask is if we're, if all the schools are reporting uniformly, I noticed that with parent contact, four of the five schools have a participation of like 92 to 99.7%, and then we have one school at 74.4%, and that kind of stuck out like a sore thumb. And I was just wondering if that's something where we utilize the data to make sure all the reporting is uniform, or if we see something where one school is out of alignment with the rest?
That's a prime example of the exact kind of fertile ground for discussion and review of data that's behind that, actually. Yeah, yes.
Thank you.
All in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. We were also given a letter from the Illinois High School Association of Appreciation. Any questions or comments? Also, we have our Facilities and Construction Planning Update for your review. Any questions or comments? This brings us to our unfinished business, the 2017 Proposed Tax Levy and Truth Taxation Resolution. The suggested motion is that the Board of Education approve the attached resolution, which sets forth the amount of $222,775,000 as proposed 2017 levy for Township High School District 211 and directs publication of a notice of public hearing on the proposed levy at its December 14th meeting.
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion?
Yeah, I'd like to just offer the following. Regarding the proposed levy increase of 2.4%, I'm kind of opposed to such a high percentage. I think the District 211 Administration has done a phenomenal job lowering the district expenses annually. Thank you for all of your hard work, but this board is receiving a recommendation justifying a maximum allowable increase to meet a five-year strategic plan without the discussion of the flexibility within our funding structure for that strategic plan. We approved an annual $10 million surplus from our revenue to be dedicated to capital projects, along with $10 million transferred from our reserves. We have not completely committed to these projects as some are not yet identified. We are increasing the community tax burden by $5.24 million. We should also consider 5% of our district incremental EAV is tied into area TIF districts. We approved an aggressive remodeling at Schaumburg High School this past summer where we expended 60% more than average costs to remodel our restrooms. I doubt we would be this aggressive for the sake of convenience if we did not have such revenues. I bring this as an example because there are always places to cut costs. We could slow our aggressive capital improvements within the strategic plan, reduce our annual strategic spending by half a percent, and still invest $19 million annually into our infrastructure while providing the community with property tax relief. The recent movements by our local representative Ms. Musman in Springfield and promises by the governor to reduce or freeze property taxes are a direct response to our actions to continually levy the maximum we are legally allowed. Add to that the referendum language in the state education funding bill passed with Senate Bill 1947 this year. I would anticipate action with this tool if we do not demonstrate prudence with our power to levy property taxes. Just because we can do something does not mean we should. It is our responsibility to balance the administrative recommendations with our elected responsibilities. Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else?
Yes, I'd like to make a comment. I'm not really in favor of the 2.4. I know we had the presentation, asked for a couple of options, but at this point, because of what's going on in Springfield, I feel I do have to support this because of the changes that may take place. We offer a lot for our students. We've seen what career, well, the college and career readiness for all of our students. We maintain our buildings in excellent condition, and we utilize the facilities as best we can, and I think we are being as prudent as we can be right now, and we continue to do that, whether people agree with us or not. I truly feel we are doing that. I think in order to maintain what we have and the facilities that we have and the plans that we have going forward, unfortunately, we probably need to do this levy at this time. Maybe next year it could be less, and maybe next year it'll end up being frozen. I don't know what's going to happen, but we've got plans that we have to take care of, and we've got to maintain the schools. That, to me, is right now of the utmost importance, and we've used our equipment and our facilities exceeding some of the life expectancy on things, so I think we have been very prudent, and we will continue to be. I'm sure we will continue to be. So I wish we didn't have to do this, but unfortunately, I think at this time that we need to.
Thank you. Anyone else? Member roll call, please. Mr. Young?
Aye.
Mr. Hinshaw?
Aye.
Mr. LaFever?
Aye.
Mrs. Klimkowitz?
Aye.
Mr. Rosenbloom?
Aye.
Mr. Dombrowski?
Nay.
Mrs. Burke? Aye. Brings us to our new business. We have the district websites rebuilding and hosting. There's a suggested motion that the Board of Education approve the proposal by Blackboard Inc. to rebuild and host eight District 211 websites at a cost of $26,710. Furthermore, that the district enter into additional four-year agreement with Blackboard Inc. to maintain and host the district's eight websites at a cost of $17,955 per year.
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? Member roll call, please. Mrs. Klimkowitz?
Aye.
Mr. Rosenbloom?
Aye.
Mr. LaFever?
Aye.
Mr. Dombrowski?
Aye.
Mr. Young?
Aye.
Mr. Hinshaw?
Aye.
Mrs. Burke? Aye. We have our site lease agreement extension with STC 2 LLC, the suggested motion that the Board of Education approve the proposed site lease amendment with STC 2 LLC to extend the terms of the current contract to June 30th, 2036, as presented.
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? Any discussion? Member roll call, please. Mr. Hinshaw?
Aye.
Mr. Dombrowski?
Aye.
Mr. Young?
Aye.
Mr. LaFever?
Aye.
Mrs. Klimkowitz?
Aye.
Mr. Rosenbloom?
Aye.
Mrs. Burke? Aye. This brings us to any potential topics for future discussion. Would anybody like to bring anything up? Okay, hearing none, we'll go ahead and move along to our committee reports. We'll begin with NSEO and Mrs. Klimkowitz.
I was not able to attend our last meeting because we had our meeting. But they did have the Parent Education Resource Center, that was the grand opening, and that's located over at the Kirk site. So if anyone would like to go over there, certainly give Dr. Hackett a call. Also working on the long-term facility planning and the gym renovation or gym addition over at Timber Ridge. So those are the things that are happening right now. Thank you.
Thank you. Ed Redd, Mr. Dombrowski?
Yeah, they had the legislative update before the veto session started, so a lot of things have changed in the last week. Some of the stuff that has been out, obviously, the Senate adjourned, so the veto session's over. Really, the only thing that came out of there was that the governor's veto for the cursive writing law was overwritten by vote. And then we've all been watching Senate Bill 851 with the House Amendment on the two-year property tax freeze. It passed the House 73 to 32. Local people that have voted for it, obviously Ms. Musman, who sponsored the amendment, Fred Crespo voted yes, Tom Morrison voted no. At that meeting, they also referenced for future boards, House Bill 4119, which is a referendum regarding bonds, House Bill 4132, which kind of goes into further definition of abatements, and then a House Bill 728 for mandatory black history education. Those three are something that they're going to be looking at closely. We also had a presentation regarding the federal ESAA requirements, I think that's Every Student Succeeds Act, regarding reporting our financials on the report cards. So there's a lot of work yet to be done, considering that all the districts have their own unique way of doing things, whether it's a curate method. So not all districts report at the same time. Some carry their payroll to the end of June, some do it at the beginning of June. So those are issues that the Illinois State Board of Education is dealing with as they're trying to figure out what they're going to collect before the deadline as far as report card reporting, so.
Thank you. That's great. Mr. Kovak, with the Technology Committee?
Thank you. The committee met on October 26. We had a strong turnout with parents from each of our schools, representatives from Harper District 54 and both the Palatine and Schaumburg Library Districts. During the evening, we focused on two of the enterprise systems that our parents engage with, Infinite Campus and Schoology. We had one of our English Department Chairs, Sue Hess from Conant, talk specifically about how she uses Schoology as a vehicle to communicate not only with her students, but with her parents as well, and received, you know, strong feedback from those in attendance at the committee about the benefits that they have seen and realized through the use of this tool, and also offering their feedback and input about ways to improve the use of it within the district. The same was true for Infinite Campus, where Christina Ordonia is one of our tech department chairs from Hoffman Estate High School showcased some of the ways that we try to leverage that tool. And again, we received both the praise for things that are done and suggestions for ways to do it better, which is the intent of hosting these meetings, and I think validates the time that's devoted to them.
Thank you. Mr. LaFever, Budgen Finance?
At the last committee meeting, we had the levy presentation again and a little status report on our IMRF funding.
Thank you. Mr. Young, Facilities?
Yeah, we had the Media Center opening over at From this past week, and then I guess Schaumburg's Cafeteria had a grand opening. Outside of that, I guess over the winter break, they'll be finishing up the punch list over at Schaumburg, and that's pretty much it.
Thank you. There's two announcements for your review. I would just like to mention that next Thursday is the Ra fundraiser, which is the Realtors Against Homeless, that links together with the foundation. So it's always a good event. I know Dr. Kates sent us a link, so if you, even last minute, you show up at the door, you can always register. And then, of course, our next board meeting. All right, that brings us to entering closed session. There's a suggested motion that the Board of Education enter closed session to discuss minutes of the meetings lawfully closed under the Open Meetings Act. The appointment, employment, compensation, discipline, performance, or dismissal of specific employees matter relating to an individual student and collective negotiating matters between the public body and its employee or their representatives.
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? Member roll call, please. Mr. Dombrowski?
Aye.
Mr. Hinshaw?
Aye.
Mrs. Klimkowitz?
Aye.
Mr. LaFever?
Aye.
Mr. Rosenbloom?
Aye.
Mr. Young?
Aye.
Mrs. Burke? Aye. Suggested motion that Board of Education return to open session?
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? Member roll call, please.
Mr. Dombrowski?
Aye.
Mr. Hinshaw?
Aye.
Mrs. Klimkowitz?
Aye.
Mr. LaFever?
Aye.
Mr. Rosenbloom?
Aye.
Mr. Young?
Aye.
Mrs. Burke?
Aye. We have a suggested motion for discipline of staff members. The suggested motion is that employee Eric Byrne be suspended for one day without pay. Further, the board secretary notify the said employee in writing of this action by the Board of Education.
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? Member roll call, please.
Mr. Rosenbloom?
Aye.
Mr. LaFever?
Aye.
Mr. Dombrowski?
Aye.
Mr. Young?
Aye.
Mr. Hinshaw?
Aye.
Mrs. Klimkowitz?
Aye.
Mrs. Burke?
Aye. The second is the suggested motion is that employee Amy Oruludzky be suspended for five days without pay. Further, that the board secretary notify the said employee in writing of this action